All right, it looks like everyone's settled in. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, our favorite meeting of the year for May 29th. All rise please as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance chooses life of the United States of America and choose your public for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can everyone hear us tonight? Okay. Well, good evening, thank you for being with us. This is a special night, this is the night when we honor certain special folks among our community who've made our town so special and who've worked so hard for our town. The town of Simsbury has been honoring our hometown heroes for the last 27 years when Governor O'Neill designated the anniversary, the founding of Connecticut, and we've been celebrating hometown hero awards ever since. First, I'd like to introduce the committee serving on the Board of Selectmen is Nancy Hasi. Also serving on the committee was Ron LaCondro, Roger Spear representing the Historic Society. Ron is the local business leader representing the business community. Frank Haviland, who's here this evening, Frank, welcome, who are former hometown hero. How's it feel to be a hometown hero, Frank? Pretty good. And Bob Gauthier representing our veterans community, thank you Bob for being here. And on behalf of the town of Simsbury, thank you Bob and the veterans of foreign wars and the American Legion for the best parade I've seen in Simsbury. This is really exciting, we had so many wonderful nominations and we want to congratulate all the nominees and the committee had, actually took two days to make their decision, so that tells you what a wonderful group of nominees that we had to select from this year. We don't give out the awards without a lot of thought and without a lot of consideration because it really is a special award and we want to keep it special so that folks know how important it is to recognize those who've given back to our community. Simsbury is really a special place, our best asset regardless of the mountains and the river and the open spaces is the people of our town. And there's not one aspect of our community that's not touched by volunteers. Beginning with the volunteers who serve on the Board of Selectmen, thank you for your service. All the boards, all the volunteers who serve on boards and commissions throughout the town, all of our volunteer ambulance, our volunteer fire department who serve our community each and every day, every aspect of the community from the flowers that you see in our flower boxes, those are all donated and put in there by volunteers, to our rivers that are kept clean, to our bike paths, every part of what makes Simsbury's great is touched by volunteers and we're very grateful, very fortunate to have a community where so many folks give back. So this is our way to honor you, we'd like to thank everybody who volunteers and gives back in some small way and we ask you to help us celebrate those who we're honoring here tonight. So before we get started, we'll call up our honorees, we'll tell you a little bit about why they're being honored, but you all know because you've seen our heroes, our hometown heroes in the community quietly doing their hard work for all of us. And then we'll have each one come up, you're welcome to say a few words if you'd like, we do have a little business to do tonight, so you know, you don't have all night, but you can take your time and feel free to share your thoughts. And then we'll have all of the hometown hero honorees at the end stand for a picture so we can get everybody together in one place. So I'll ask Lisa Havner to make the first presentation, Lisa.
Good evening, everyone.
Maybe you want to be on the third?
Sure.
The acoustics are a little tough, but if you have trouble hearing, just wave to us.
I think I'm gonna embarrass you guys and ask you to join me up here, come on up.
We'll start with Dawn and Sally Rieger.
Welcome and congratulations. I just want to start off saying that this is one of two two-fers we have tonight. We're giving this award to a couple and we have another couple coming up. We're so excited to do this, what you may not know about the Riegers is that they make maple syrup and it is the best maple syrup I've ever tasted, shout out, and they tend forests, but they literally take care of forests, hundreds of acres of forest. The other thing they do is there isn't one aspect in the town of Simsbury that they haven't touched when it comes to the rivers, the mountains, the open space, the trails. If it has to do with the environment, you will find them actively engaged in volunteering. I'm gonna go ahead and read why they are receiving this award tonight. Both Sally and Dawn, retired professionals, have given untold hours of volunteer time for the town they love, Simsbury. Sally and Dawn have been crusaders for the land trust. Sally is the chairperson of the study committee for the wild and scenic designation for the Farmington River and Salmon Brook. When initiated, the estimated timeframe to obtain the designation was two years. Six years later, Sally is still leading this committee which has held monthly meetings with amazing educational presentations by experts and everything to do with the Farmington River, Salmon Brook, and the watershed. Sally has cheerfully and expertly worked with the National Park Service to educate her committee, the citizens of the area, the local, state, local, state and federal government on the benefits of this designation. They've come before our board on a number of occasions and we thank them for that. Sally and Dawn have recently become the leaders of the opposition to the MDC proposal to divert the waters flowing from the Farmington River. They are leading the effort to save the water in the Farmington River for our communities, we thank them for that. Once again, endless volunteer hours, meetings with town and state officials, night and day, public hearings and rallying the opposition forces were met with grace as Sally and Dawn lead the battle for the river and the land that they and those of us who live in it love so much. Sally and Dawn are hometown heroes for the battles they are fighting and will continue to fight and for the leadership and countless volunteer hours they are unselfishly giving to our community. We are so proud to honor Sally and Dawn Rieger as hometown heroes.
Those many years ago when we served in the Peace Corps, the folks where we were stationed, if you thanked them for something, would usually say "la shukur ala wajib," which means we don't expect to be thanked for doing our duty. And that's true in our case as well. We didn't expect to be thanked, but we appreciate it very much. But we in turn have to thank the many other volunteers who've, some of whom are public officials, both elected and appointed, who've worked on these environmental causes in the town and we hope will continue to do so. The river needs your help, folks, you need to be vigilant and vocal and if necessary vicious to protect the river. Thanks very much.
Selectmen Ascom will present the next award.
Mr. Horton, why don't you come on up here and join me, sir? Come on up, sir. Now, I'm particularly excited about being able to bestow this honor on Mr. Horton and I'll always call him Mr. Horton because I've known him since I was about yeetol. I grew up right next door to Mr. Horton and he was involved in so many aspects of my life and it's wonderful to see him continue to be involved in so many aspects of everyone's life in this town. We share not only a common address, but also a common company. I work for the Travelers, Mr. Horton is a retiree from the Travelers Insurance Company. He's given endless amounts of time in many areas around town, particularly working with seniors, providing tax preparation. This year alone, he and his team prepared 162 individual and joint returns, serving a total of 200 clients. You might put my old man out of business if you keep that up. Eighty-two percent of those folks were Simsbury residents. You have also volunteered at the Senior Center, offering individual computer tutoring. You're well-known for your Meals on Wheels volunteering with McLean. You're representative of the Simsbury Public Library Books to Your Door Committee, as well as a member of the YMCA Volunteer in Adult Literacy Program. We're so proud to honor you today, Mr. Horton, as Simsbury's hometown hero for your dedication to volunteerism.
Thank you, thank you, I want to be brief. I just want to thank everyone, the board, the committee, my friends who took the time and trouble to nominate me, it was very thoughtful, I'm very appreciative, and all the other people who really make volunteer efforts possible. We mentioned some of the things that we do, but it takes a dedicated staff of people like Susan Bullock and her people, Kathy Marshall and her staff to organize the programs and activities and all the things that require and can use volunteer activities. So I think we should give recognition to all the hard work that they do to provide these wonderful facilities for our community. And while I certainly never expected or really wanted anything like this, I think it's a great program with no other reason than it helps to publicize to our people here in town, the opportunities and the need for volunteer services and perhaps will encourage other people to say, you know, "By God, I've got something I can offer and if you do, believe me, you'll not only make some other people glad that you entered their lives, but you'll feel good about it too." Thank you very much.
Selectman Hasi will present our next award, not winners.
I would invite Marion and Bob Gilmore up to join me.
That was pretty good maneuvering there, Bob.
It's a good about face, right? And I have to say during our meetings, Mr. Gauthier said such wonderful things about you, so I know that this award is well-deserved and so I'll share with some of the folks the wonderful things that you've accomplished. Marion and Bob have been active, involved Simsbury residents who continue to love and selflessly contribute to the betterment of our community. As library volunteers, they have delivered books to the homebound for many years. Marion volunteers at the annual library book sale and on a regular basis checking in new books as they arrive at the library. Together, they have been involved at McLean for 30 years, delivering Meals on Wheels together, coordinating cocktail parties, and Marion serves on the patient-centered care committee and is a visitor to many residents. Both are very active members of First Church, Marion is a member of the choir, and Robert served as an elder, a deacon, and an usher, also volunteering at a homeless shelter in Hartford. It's our pleasure to recognize Marion and Robert as Simsbury hometown heroes.
How many heroes do you know that have to use a walker? We're very flattered and honored to be named hometown heroes. We've been in Simsbury now for, what, 40 years? And we love it, we have enjoyed every minute we've been here. We thank you for this honor and we hope to continue to serve the community for many more years.
Selectman Wertheimer will now present the award to our next nominee. I'll ask Jane Stevenson to come on up.
Jane really does exemplify the best in volunteer work. She has been dedicated to the town and to nonprofit groups in a truly selfless way for many years. As a Simsbury Fire Department auxiliary member, she has assisted firefighters in emergency and training activities for 35 years and has served as the host of the annual McLean Volunteers Lunch at the firehouse. Jane has served as an important volunteer in the McLean Auxiliary, serving first as the volunteer, first as a volunteer buyer for the gift shop and later as president of the auxiliary where she initiated the auxiliary scholarships that benefit employees and their college-age children. This year, she was chairman of Employee Appreciation Day, which included overseeing the serving of meals to all three shifts of employees. She is also very involved in her church, St. Mary's, acting as chairperson for the sponsors of the St. Mary's Carnival and as chairperson for Granny's Attic, a giant week-long tag sale run to raise funds for St. Mary's. We are proud tonight to honor Jane for her commitment to Simsbury and honor her as a Simsbury hometown hero.
Good evening and thank you all for coming and thank you the board for also not having me here tonight. I'm lost for words, I have a little cold, so I'm trying to get through this. But I wanted to mention to you, I love all my volunteer jobs, but it takes a group of people to really have an organization run smoothly and without those other volunteers, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. And that's everything from McLean Auxiliary to the Fire Department Auxiliary to the St. Mary's Church, a great group of people that I've worked with and really I feel like they should also get this award because they're very dedicated too also, so thank you all.
And now our final presentation will be made by Selectman Al.
I'll ask Susan Messino to join me. Susan was a leader in the Keep the Woods effort, a grassroots organization that helped raise $3 million in private funding and secured grants to help the town fund, purchase, and preserve 425 acres known as the Ethel Walker Woods of Simsbury. And by doing so, the major aquifer for Simsbury's water is now protected. She established a Safe Roots to School program, not only in her neighborhood, but in other town grade schools for children within walking distance to school. This program is a federal initiative establishing safe walkways and bikeways and monitors so parents and children will establish good physical exercise habits and cut down on excessive auto trips of parent drop-offs. The Grange has been reestablished and repurposed for modern-day kids to bring them from their virtual world to the real world thanks to Susan. Our town has benefited in so many ways due to the efforts of Susan Messino and we are pleased to present her with the hometown hero award.
Well, I'm really honored to be here and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the people that have worked with me on Keep the Woods for years and also with the Safe Roots to School program and also the Grange. But I wanted to share what is in common for me personally with the different things that I've been involved in. So in my real life, I'm a researcher and I study the brain and all the things that I've been working on, I feel are all dedicated to keep your brain healthy. And the best things for your brain are actually not Sudoku or crossword puzzles, it's exercise, good food, and friends. And I don't want to disappoint the people that are really working on the Sudoku, that's not bad, but these other things are really important. And I also wanted to mention what brought me to Simsbury in the first place. So this is our 10th year in Simsbury and I lived out west for a number of years, although I am originally from Massachusetts. And I wanted to move to someplace which really cared about itself and its future. And I'm a researcher and I spent a lot of time researching where I would move my family. And the reason I came to Simsbury is because of the Simsbury Land Trust, what they've done here and what they've established for the future. And for me, that is sort of dovetailed into other efforts through caring about the land and caring about this town, I got involved in Keep the Woods. I got to know the Terriffill Village Association, another part of town that really cares about its past and its future. Joined the George Hall Farm CSA to get great food for our family. Got involved and got to know the farmers at Flammick Farm, which is a great educational resource. And more recently, got involved with the Grange. And you know, if you look at Simsbury's downtown, if you look at this beautiful building that was donated here, that's the home to our Senior Center, this town has so many assets that we really need to care about and care for for the future. And in support of Simsbury's downtown, I'm delighted to be the person to announce that after the celebration and cake here tonight, there's going to be free pizza and a little more socializing if you'd like to gather over at the Maple Tree. And one more thing, I almost forgot, in the interest of being vigilant, but not yet vicious, in terms of the MDC proposal, we are circulating a petition opposing the option to extend an MDC pipeline to Yukon and diverting water from the Farmington Valley. And if you haven't signed it yet in person or online, I will circulate my clipboard and I'd be happy to talk to you about this later. Thank you.
So at this point, you can see why our hometown heroes are such special people. Every one of them thanks somebody else for all the work that they've done, so we're really honored and blessed to have you in our community, you make our community so great. And whether it's volunteering at the library, open space, the environment schools, the fire district, church, seniors, we're just so fortunate to have so many hard-working folks give back to our community. Just before everyone comes back up for photos, there are a couple of folks in the audience tonight that won't be part of our community shortly and I'd just like to take a moment and embarrass them to acknowledge Reverend Jonathan Morgan will be leaving First Church and we're gonna miss him very much, so congratulations to you and good luck to you. Sue Bullock, our librarian, is leaving us in June and Sue has done a great job for the library, all of you mentioned Sue and her wonderful staff, and helped us build that wonderful addition of the library, we're gonna miss you very much, so congratulations to you. And standing in the back, our town engineer who we're not gonna let leave because he's the only one who knows where all the files are buried, that's our town engineer, Rich Suwitzki, who's been with the town more than 30 years, so Rich, congratulations to you. At this point, I'd like the honorees to come up so we can take your picture and congratulate you, want to thank your family, your friends, your community for coming out and supporting you and acknowledging the wonderful work that you've all done for all of us, so thank you. Come on up. Welcome back, everyone, thank you for joining us for our hometown hero presentation. And a number of our hometown heroes asked if I would thank their families for their support in allowing them to dedicate their time to volunteer for the town, so I just wanted to put that in the record. I know the acoustics are not very good, we're gonna move to public audience. SCTV has asked that we speak into the microphone, so if you'd like to speak into the microphone so that people can hear what you're saying, feel free to use the microphone, if you don't use the microphone, it will be hard for us to hear, so it's your choice. We'll open up the public audience, anyone who'd like to speak, yes.
The acoustics are terrible.
They are.
I'm very concerned, Don Coe, 26 would come drive, I'm very concerned with the decision-making ability of the Board of Selectmen and the leadership that is lacking. This year, this board will be asking the Simsbury voters for their votes and none of these elected officials should be re-elected, but they will continue to serve because there are no term limits. This position has become a popularity contest, not what you bring to the position to improve Simsbury. It is time that Simsbury changes the charter and places term limits for every elected office. The political parties refuse to ask the residents for a vote on professional management, although every consultant has stated Simsbury should have a town manager. Since we cannot have professional management, it is time to have term limits. Public service was never intended to be a career. It is time for term limits for all elected officials. This board is required to have public audience by law for citizen concerns and this board continues to look forward and disconnect it. There is no interaction during this process and everything is discounted as an annoyance. The citizens of Simsbury see this disconnect during each meeting with an attitude that discourages the public to come forward. In the end, nothing gets done. The only people voting for the budgets are politically connected people who get their share of public money. This board forwarded a charter for a vote, although they rejected many of the changes. In order not to offend anyone and get re-elected, they don't make controversial decisions. Term limits will eliminate the need to please. We now have a do-nothing board. All the powers of the town meeting with powers to approve $3 million of taxable items is given to the elected Board of Selectmen and Finance Board. They approved over $200,000 to design a senior center where nobody knows what, where, and how it should be used. There is still no consensus on the need for a senior center with a price tag of $8 million. The first election position has been changed in the charter to have all the powers transferred to the pseudo-non-elected administrator. However, the salary of the first election remains over $120,000. These changes in the charter were done to the apathy of the Simsbury taxpayers. All property in Simsbury was devalued, an average of 15%, and the taxes continued to increase. Simsbury will not be able to attract business if our mill rate is 38.51 and Avon is 26.32 mills. The Performing Arts Commission has been guided by money over the selection of appropriate concerts. The Flaming Lips Concert would bring many people to Simsbury and money would be made. However, nobody seemed to care that this group promotes drugs, sex, and nudity. The chairman of the PAC bar- The chairman of the PAC, Bob Hensley, has come before this board asserting that he is making money for the town with these concerts. Is the good old buck more important than family values? Bob Hensley should be removed as chairman of the PAC since his values are inconsistent with the residents of Simsbury. Recently, there was an article in the Hartford Current, Drunken Concert Goers: Big Problem at Hospitals. It states, and I quote, "The problem of drunken concert goers clogging hospital emergency departments has reached a level of a public health issue." End quote. Why vote for concerts that would bring a large crowd that we cannot control? Why has the Board of Selectment approved Flaming Lips without due diligence? The only person aware of the problems that could occur and we were unable to control is Chief Ingerson, who did not approve the gathering permit, knowing the concerns of this type of concert that both the PAC and the Board of Selectment ignored. On Saturday, May 18th, the bike group gathered on the state commuter lot on Route 185. Excuse me. On Route 185 and Route 10. They set up tents with bicycles and accessories supplied by bike businesses and others. The state parking lot clearly states... Here's another picture of the parking lot that I took that day. And here's the sign. And this is the sign where it says, "No sale." And I'll continue my speech. The state parking lot clearly states, quote, and you have the picture, "No sale or distribution of goods or services. Violators will be subject to prosecution under Chapter 242, General Statute 13B-29, Commissioner Transportation. Any such parking facilities which are not regulated by municipalities on October 1st, 1983 may be used only for routine, temporary parking by persons using carpool or van vehicles or mass transportation facilities. The commissioner shall adopt regulations in accordance with provisions of Chapter 54 governing the use of such parking facilities. A violation of any provision of any such regulations shall be an infraction. The bike group violated the law and is presently being investigated by the DOT. According to my conversation with the DOT, the group was told to go to the back of the parking lot, not to block the entrance with town sawhorses, and not to set up tents in front of the commuter lot, and have nothing inconsistent with the policies of the state. There was sale and distribution of goods and services. How can the town give a gathering permit to a group that is using state property? Did the state give them permission to include the state insurance policy for indemnity? How can the town give this group a gathering permit in violation of state law? How can the state give permission to the bike group to use the state commuter lot in violation of state law? The town is saying the state gave approval, and the state says they were not told the truth on how the bike group was promoting Bike Month. Does the end justify the means? These pictures don't lie. The state DOT is in the process of investigating my concerns. In conclusion, there was a violation of law. This is not the first time that the bicycle group has thwarted the rules of law by ignoring the permitting process for the placement of the Rusty Bike Sculpture landscaping and lights on the town land where it was placed. Why has First Selectman Mary Glassman allowed this activity without any intervention and addressed the group at the erection of the plaque embracing this activity on town land? Both Director of Works Tom Roy and Engineer Rich Suwitzki are named on the plaque as committee members. How can First Selectman Mary Glassman allow these employees to devote all their time to the bike group without asking for payment for their time and services? Why has First Selectman Mary Glassman used town money to promote a private organization? Recently, an illegal bike sign was located on the Rusty Bike site. When is enough enough? I would like to report that the residents living at Eno Farms Affordable Housing have been sent notices that their rent will be increased. Since the town is responsible for taking care of the poor at this complex, why has the town... What has the town done to intervene? Thank you very much for listening, and all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury.com and Simsbury Patch for your review.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll pick up my papers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to address the board and the audience. And I apologize for my nasal condition, but it's the time of the season and I should be over in a day or so. Joan, they selected the hometown hero and they awarded and they had the glad flies and whatever you want. But in reality, you're my hometown hero, and I think everybody in this audience should be your hometown hero. Because, you know, people don't like to hear the truth. And I can go back to biblical times when Nathan told off the king, King David, the strongest king in the universe at the time, and he told him, "David, you're not doing the right thing." And David told him, "Well, tell me who done it and I'll kill him." And he says, "You did it, David." And here again, we have the same thing. You come, you tell the truth, you point out the shortcomings of the board, and for some reason or other, you're not our hometown hero. We'd rather go for votes than hearing the truth. Now, having said that, when are we going to put the myth of this water company to bed? We have a university, right? And I always, always have brought up that our youth, they're the people of tomorrow. And we have a university, the university needs water. And what do we have in Simsbury? A bunch of people. I call them Grouchers. For some reason or other, they want to stop the water flow from going out of the river. Do you know that if you were to try to walk the Farmington River from Simsbury, from the bridge on Simsbury Road all the way to Southwick, that you wouldn't be able to? Because all that land that abuts the Farmington River in Simsbury is owned by private parties, and they can stop you from trespassing on their land. If you want to walk in the middle of the river, over your head, I suppose you can. Legally, you can take it and fight it in the courts. But in reality, all this heckaballo is all about less than 100 people that abut that land. 100 people. You can't walk on either side of that Farmington River. And I challenge anybody to tell me they can. You can't walk. Even the right-of-way that we gave to Hall, he controls that on the river. He tells you whether or not you can walk on it. We can't walk on it. And this is a thing you have to look at. Are we going to deprive a whole community from the river because of 100 property owners? If I want to walk Long Island Sound, I can go from New London all the way to Greenwich, and nobody can stop me as long as it's low tide. I can walk all that way. And it's been tested in the courts for you lawyers. At Greenwich, when they tried to prevent them from walking on the beach at Greenwich, the court came in and said, "You can't stop them." So, here we go, going back to a mistake that was made in purchasing the wrong water company because in my opinion, this town should be associated with the Metropolitan District Commission in West Hartford and Hartford. And to this day, I say, if you'd done that, you wouldn't have to worry about sewers, you would have streetlights, and you would have sidewalks. And I heard tonight how we have sidewalks, we have sewers, and we have streetlights, and we don't. And I'm out driving in the evening, and if you think we do have streetlights, drive Route 10. They're not streetlights. They're lights when I was a youngster during World War II. They're what you call blackout lights to save electricity. They don't light up anything. Ask my wife. She drives too. And the point I'm trying to make is getting back to this water... It's a myth. And now, we have our representative playing to the choir, and he wrote an article, and he had a state job up there at one time, working for the University of Connecticut. And he writes a letter for his own well-being to Dr. Herbst, the director of Yukon, about the water. The only reason this letter is being written, in my opinion, is so he can more or less get a bigger and better job at Yukon. Because the only... I think the only financial job he has is what the state pays him. He doesn't have a private job. But the reason I bring it out is that he's picking up the torch for this group, the Farmington Watershed people. And the only thing is, is they all have their own selfish interest. You have grants, you have salaries, you have all this, and it runs in and they're running. That Farmington Watershed, that's all personal gratification for hire. In other words, all the officers are paid.
If you could summarize, Mr. Kalashman.
Yeah. And the reason I like to close with this. It's a myth. You people should be negotiating with the MDC. You should be negotiating with Wire Water Company. And if they need the water, find a way to give it to them. And now, I've read on many occasions that the MDC has offered water from the reservoir that's clear water that people use and drink, has offered it to people and to replace it, and for some reason or other, nobody wants to talk because the private property owners that control that river, they don't want any part of it. And that's the reason for it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kalashman. Anyone else who'd like to address the board this time? Okay. Thank you for your comments. We'll move into First Selectment Report. I just have two items. The first is that the town of Simsbury has been asked to...
In a DEEP and Yukon Bear Population Study, if you noticed, there's been an increase in the number of black bears in the area. The Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and the University of Connecticut are working together to compile an estimate of the population. As the state's population has increased, there have been some conflicts with bears, and they'd like to do this study that they find is critical to the wildlife division's creation of a bear management program. The town of Simsbury is joining Avon, Farmington, and Canton in participating in this important bear study. The study relies on a small area set up on the town's open space away from residential areas. The areas are clearly marked with a strand of barbed wire to collect hair samples from bears moving through the area. So, we've been assured by the DEEP that the areas do not attract bears, and there have never been any safety concerns with respect to this test. We've had our share of bears, as you all know, and it's important for public safety that we work with the DEEP and also Yukon to get the information they need to properly design the bear management program. We've had Mike Stevens from the DEEP heading this project. He's been out to Simsbury and is working very cooperatively with our Animal Control Officer, Mark Rudowitz, who has worked closely with Mark and Mike and supports the program. So, just wanted to let the board know Simsbury will be participating. Simsbury will also be participating in another emergency disaster drill. This drill is being conducted by the State's Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. It will be a statewide severe weather exercise on June 20th, similar to the exercise the town conducted last year that helps towns prepare for natural disasters. This year's exercise will be a hypothetical severe ice storm, which we've had, impacting the west-northwest portion of the state. And this will give our town and other towns throughout the region an opportunity to participate. The town will activate our Emergency Operations Center, which is located in the Police Department at Town Hall, and will be working closely with the Public Safety Subcommittee, of which Mr. Ascom and Ms. Havner are part, will participate as well. I want to thank all of our staff and all of our volunteers who work so hard to help us prepare for our emergency disasters. And again, that's June 22nd. I think there's a couple of dates. June 20th and 22nd, town of Simsbury will participate on June 20th. We'll move now to our action items. The first action is to approve the Terriffill Park and Gazebo to be used for three separate kayak races. We have the Terriffill Slalom Race on June 9th, the North American Junior Olympics Festival on July 13th and 19th, and the Fifth Annual Whitewater Triple Crown Championships for July 20th and 21st. We're thrilled to have these wonderful events come back to our own Terriffill and welcome Frank Cavlin, who's worked so hard to bring these to our town.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm here once again to ask the permission of the Board of Selectmen for permission to run for the Terriffill Village Association to run these kayak events in Terriffill Gorge. There are three events this year, and we'd like to use both Terriffill Park and the Terriffill Village Green and to borrow the public address systems from the Culture Parks and Recreation Department as we have for the last four years. This is our fifth year doing this, and we're really happy that it's working so far. We provide public gathering permit, insurance for the towns and the CL&amp;P and the others that are sponsors. As Mary just said, the Triple Crown is in late July, 20th and 21st. It's usually in April, but for conflicting reasons, we had to move it to July, and it turned out there was no water in April. So, we may have more water in July than we would have had in April. So, this is a bizarre year. Thank you for your support for kayak racing in the gorge. We're very happy to do this, and we're thrilled for the support that we get.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks to you and the Terriffill Village Association for all the hard work in putting this event on. I think we have technical difficulty. Rich is right. Is Rich on? I guess. I wasn't going crazy before. Oh, that seems to have worked. Whatever you did, it's good.
Yeah. I think it's dead.
Kill it. It's dead. That's fine. Okay. We can pass mics. We'll... Maybe we can share more. Maybe you can push yours over and we can share these mics. Any questions for Frank?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
If anyone hasn't been to the kayak events, I highly urge them, you to all put it on your calendars. It's really spectacular events. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. At this time, I know we have a boy scout, Eagle Scout actually, among us who would like to get permission to volunteer. So, at this point in the agenda, I could have a motion to amend the agenda to take up item G.
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We want to make sure that Dan Girardi can get back to do his homework. So, Dan, come on up. Welcome. We're really happy to have you here.
Oh, it's a special meeting.
Yeah, we can't move the agenda.
Dan, we're sorry.
Thank you. It was... We were trying to get Dan out early, but thank you for reminding us this is a special meeting because of the location change. So, I hope you brought your homework, Dan. You'll have to stay a few more minutes. Okay. The next item, we'll move on to the senior center update. And we are at the point in our presentation of the senior center where we're now ready to move forward with some public discussion, public comment. We wanted to make sure that the public had an overview of what's before us. The board will then be asked to set a public hearing for... So at this point, we'll move to Rich, and I'll let Rich introduce our guests.
Okay, thank you. I referred a presentation earlier on this, and we're going to very briefly review some of the high points. As you know, for the past year and a half, the Public Building Committee, along with the very active Subcommittee of Seniors and other involved people, have looked at a number of sites for senior community centers, starting with this building. And the charge of the Public Building Committee also included looking at other sites. And we did in fact look at several sites and essentially boiled the best options down to renovating and adding to the Eno Building, as well as the option of a new facility on the corner of Bushy Hill and Stratton Brook Road. And the third site, while it was not studied in depth, was brought up and does have merit, which is adding onto the back of the Performing Arts Center. So our architect, Tom Arkery, will do a brief presentation on some of the background analysis and process that we used, some of the program needs and space requirements, and briefly touch on the sites that we've selected for the pursuit.
Thank you, Rich.
Can't go very far. That's all right.
Yeah, that's fine. It's great.
Thanks. My name is Tom Arkery. I'm a principal with Quisenberry Arkery Architects, and I will try and keep my presentation brief tonight. We are planning two public information meetings in the very near future, which will actually be very detailed. We will go into all of the unique components of each phase of the project. As Rich said, we've been working over the last year and a half to put a feasibility study together to determine the needs and ultimately the best solution for Simsbury's Senior Center. This work was done in three major phases. The first phase, programming and design, was to identify what the program and space needs are for the facility. This involved working with focus groups, doing a demographic study of the community's population and their age groups, interviews with staff, comparative analysis with other communities and their senior centers, and ultimately establishing a final program. As a part of the first phase, we were also looking at the Eno Hall facility, and we were trying to determine whether or not Eno Hall could meet the needs long-term of the senior center. We did a capital needs assessment, which looked at the assets of the building, and its shape, a capacity analysis, historic analysis, and handicap accessibility review. We put together a conceptual design and some costing and researched the viability of this. Interviews and reporting actually involved us taking part in senior center events, interviewing patrons, and finding out what the particular needs of the center and the drawbacks really are. Demographic study involved us looking at the national aging population, the aging population of the state of Connecticut, and how they compare. And this shows a comparative analysis. The state of Connecticut is actually significantly older in general than the age of the United States. And then we took a hard look at Simsbury's growing population. We are planning and targeting for the needs of the baby boom, which will peak by about the year 2030. Between the years 2000 and 2030, it's projected that there will be a 70-plus percent increase in your 55-plus population. Ultimately, looking at the needs, looking at other communities with similar needs and centers, and interviewing the staff, we determined program space needs of about 22,000 square feet. This is comparable with Branford, Plainville, and in a very similar way, the Darien community and their needs. As I mentioned, we did a historic analysis of this building and an area analysis to find out what space is available for use, what spaces we physically wouldn't be able to touch because of its historic nature, and how we could make the center work here. We looked at all the spaces that are essentially non-handicap accessible. We established a series of key design goals for the center, including meeting the program needs, which is number one, increasing functionality and natural lighting, and preserving the assets here for future use. Ultimately, the biggest issue with using Eno Hall is the parking and coming to a solution for that. So we put a concept together that includes a small addition here at Eno Hall with an access drive off of Station Street and a parking deck to the east side of the facility. The addition would work by excavating out, so we would have multiple levels in the facility and have direct access to multiple levels of a parking deck. The parking deck could be accessed not only from Station Street, but from Railroad Street. Finally, we did some preliminary assessments that compared the financial viability of renovating Eno Hall to building a new center on a similar site, and found that the cost was generally about the same, maybe slightly less. However, the numbers were skewed by the need to build a parking structure at this site. If we didn't have to deal with the parking on-site, Eno Hall would be a very financially competitive option. After we concluded that Eno Hall was a viable option for the community, and realistically we felt it made very good sense, we were charged by the community to look at alternate sites and to explore building a new center for Simsbury. Phase two included identifying sites, doing a site search, finding what sites were available, trying to find out sites that were owned by the community. And a large list was made that was quickly culled to a moderate list and eliminated sites that really had no viability whatsoever. Then we did a comparative analysis of all the sites, establishing values, rating and ranking them, so that we could create a shortlist and identify preferential sites. Finally, we would do concept layouts and designs in order to fine-tune the site. This diagram shows one of the sites that we evaluated just south, or just east of here in the parking lots owned by the state. And the exercise demonstrates how we took a 20,000-square-foot footprint and parking just to, and dropped it on the site, just to see if it was physically viable, and we researched many of the other factors. We created a tablet, which provided points, importance points, to each particular value that we used to evaluate each site. Things, for instance, like, is the property owned by the town? It carries 10 points of value. Does the site have utilities? Sewer, gas, and water carries 10 points of value. And numerous other elements became criteria for evaluating each of the sites, with a total potential score of 100. In this case, Eno Hall ranked fairly high, within 88. We also looked at the particular benefits and detractions associated with each site. When we were done, there were seven sites that ranked at the high end of the evaluations. And of those seven, four clearly separated themselves from the others in terms of criteria. The rating and ranking system isn't an exact science. There's certainly room for maneuver and interpretation. However, it was clear that after we evaluated all the sites, that these four stood apart from the others. With that, we put together concept designs for each of those three sites, one of which being the Performing Arts Center, which would propose, in addition to the Performing Arts Center, additional parking, additional services. And at this site, there were many positive attributes, including the reality that this location provides the best opportunity for an intergenerational senior slash community center, with shared services not only for recreation, but for performing arts and for the seniors. This is the boulevard site that I mentioned before. Again, this is within walking distance of downtown, and offered a lot of positive attributes in that it's almost, it's the closest, other than Eno Hall, to the Main Street area. So there's interaction with the services, but there were some drawbacks to this site in that this site is slated for potential future planned development uses for housing. And then the Bushy Hill site, which is on the corner of Bushy Hill and Stratton Brook Road. This site was, had positive attributes that included its clean, it's very simple to put a facility there, the costs are relatively moderate. And interestingly enough, this site is actually, while it's the one site that's not closest to the downtown Main Street District, this site is closest to the Population Center. Most of the population residences are to the direct west of the Main Street corridor, and access, this is in a central location, north-south, and access to the site, to some degree, is simpler because you don't have to go through the Main Street corridor. At the same point, we put a lot of value on being in the Main Street District, and that was the one real drawback to this location. And then we refined the site plan for the Eno Hall concept, brought some more detail to it, so that we could evaluate it and put costing to it. Ultimately, we prepared cost estimates for these concept designs that allowed us to compare the costs associated with each facility. In the end, the Performing Arts Center project was slightly higher, and the Bushy Hill Center project came in low. Eno Hall came in the second most expensive, again, due to the parking issue. When this exercise was completed, we were asked by the building committee to take the sites. They narrowed it down to two sites for a more detailed investigation. There was concern that the price tag associated with development was still on the high side. And our feedback to the building committee was that, well, we haven't taken an in-depth look at each of these sites. I mean, we were doing concept design. We really need to put more information in place so that we can hone the costs associated with each scheme. So we were directed to look at two sites, the Eno Memorial Hall, which represented reuse of the existing building, and there are many, many attributes associated with that, not just, you know, reusing a community asset, but also the fact that renovating an existing building is sustainable, it's environmentally friendly. Those factors made Eno Hall a very strong candidate for use, even though the cost was a little higher than the other solutions. Combine that with the fact that it is in the Main Street District, and we worked with the Main Street Group, you know, to see how the senior center fits into the long-term vision for Main Street. So this was one of the key sites that had to be considered. And then the Bushy Hill Stratton Brook Road site, when we explored the other three new facility options, came out on top for a number of reasons, particularly because of the fact that we can have a one-story facility at this location, it was going to be easy to build, it was in the heart of the residential neighborhoods. So we looked at these two sites, prepared detailed designs for each, evaluated the pluses and minuses, and then put cost estimates together, ultimately to present to the building committee and then to you and the council, so that a final decision can be made. At the Eno Memorial Hall site, again, here is the site plan. We were proposing two-way traffic on Station Street and a new entrance on the north side of the building that would have an accessible drop-off. Interestingly enough, the way the grades at the street work is that the street is only about two feet above the lowest level of this building. The floor of the hall, I call it the cafeteria downstairs. So by bringing a drive-in, we can actually create a direct handicap access and drop-off right at that entrance level. We would create a new connecting entrance on the north side of the building, a new exterior patio on the south side of the building, and a wing on the east side of the building that would house the program components that can't be accommodated here within Eno Hall. Of all the solutions, Eno Hall has the most square footage because there are tenants in programs here at the center, like the Daughters of the American Revolution, that would stay and be partners within the facility long-term. And then there are spaces like this space, which are high in historic value, high in functional value to the community as it's an auditorium, and it wouldn't make sense to, you know, renovate this space for other use. It's an asset we wouldn't want to compromise for the community. Basement level would have direct access to the garage and core services. And the basement level would also, interestingly enough, in this scheme, would propose to have space for Simsbury Community Television. And when I mean space, I mean ideal space. It would be black box space, it would be dedicated space, would have direct access to the garage for services. The main level, which would be the cafeteria level, would feature a new open lobby space on the north side of the building, which would have direct access into an expanded cafeteria space. We would take over all of the SCTV space and make that a bigger dining and entertaining space. And then in the upper right-hand corner, administrative offices, right in the core of the two entrances, one in the north, one on the east, rest facilities, a new kitchen back where the stage is, and activity rooms on the south side. The upper level would have exercise spaces and fitness spaces, dedicated spaces this facility doesn't currently have. And then this is a proposed rendering on the north side of the building, which we would propose a glass foyer that would allow the existing facade, the historic facade of the building, to remain untouched. That facade would become one of the interior walls of the lobby, and then the ex- That facade would become one of the interior walls of the lobby, and then the ex, the new exterior glass wall would, would allow the original historic facade to shine through. And then at the Bushy Hill site, a new facility located on the corner of Stratton Brook and Bushy Hill, lots of potential here in that we can develop the site however we want. It could be a one-story facility. The parking, we can build as much as the budget will allow, or we can reserve space for future growth. Direct access off of both corridors, and because the site is essentially open, we can configure the facility in such a way, in this case, it's more like a four-pronged facility, which creates more exterior skin, brings more daylight into all of the activity spaces. Daylighting is a key component of senior center design. The program would have a central entrance, again, a central communicating space where all the programs are located off of. On the right-hand side of the plan would be administration, food pantry, health screening, and a computer classroom. The left lower wing would have an exercise room, a fitness room, a true dedicated activity space, and lockers. The upper left-hand side would have fitness and strength spaces. The right side would have arts and crafts. And the core of the facility at the back would be a multi-function space with full-service kitchen and then games and activity rooms. This is an artist's rendition of what the central lobby space might look like. Circulation space is key for senior center design. It's, it's essential because the way senior centers are used to their utmost capacity is not just a place for a class or a function. It's a place where active adults can spend a good part of their day interacting with people that are coming and going from the various programs. A club, if you prefer that, that word, but as a community service, as, or as a community building, it would serve the same function for many different age groups. And here's a view, again, of a cafe, which is common in state-of-the-art senior center design. And then finally, a rendition of the exterior of that facility, which would embrace the residential elements and character of Simsberry. Finally, we had our professional cost estimator take a long, hard look at both of these schemes, and you can see that the costs were fine-tuned from the original estimates of eight million dollars in construction cost for a new center to about six and a half million dollars, or actually, yeah, about six and a half million dollars in construction cost, whereas Eno Hall went from about eight point two down to about seven point four. That's where we are in the process. As I mentioned, we are going to be doing a more detailed presentation in the coming month. If you have any questions, I'm always at your resource. And we look, I don't look forward to the task of making a final call.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. You did a great job of meeting the needs of the public building committee and looking at all of our options, and we really appreciate that. Your patience in presenting it, I think this is the fourth presentation I've seen, and I know you're trying to get around, and that's great because this is a big decision for our community, so we really appreciate your hard work. At this point, I think, Rich, you want to just walk through? We have when the public hearings are for folks who want to maybe take another look at the plans?
I hope us to be able to reach a decision on a site by the end of the summer, and my recommendation for you to consider would be an informational hearing, perhaps in June, associated with your first meeting in the month.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we might be able to meet earlier in the evening so that we can invite more senior citizens, more active participants who might be using the building. So that would be my recommendation was to do a next step and see what type of response we get from the folks that attend that meeting and provide you with some guidance.
Great. Does June 10th at 6:00 work for you? Okay. I did, at the request of the Board of Selectmen, ask the Performing Arts Board to review the proposal. They have not yet had a chance to schedule that meeting, so Mr. Hensley's here who cheers that board, and they will be reviewing the plans and meeting with the architect to discuss the proposal. So as soon as we have that information, we'll report back to the board. Any questions while Tom and Rich are here on any of the information that you saw tonight? Lisa.
Rich, for the Performing Arts Center?
Yes.
Thank you. For the Performing Arts Center option, can you talk a little bit about any aquifer or water, wetlands issues that might be associated with that, if any?
Performing Arts Center, there's a lot of water, there's a lot of gas available. There are several issues, oh, ownership problem now, so we got plenty of area to be able to. I guess we're possible. Performing Arts Center, there's a lot of rain, on-site, full loss, and the park, there are, there are these, like, it's not many, in terms of mixed, in the generation, activities played on the stores, it's a lot, it's a very exciting component, of course, to be excited. However, we got to make a very hard look at that. Questions? And that, will you, question, and I told everybody about Thursday, on Tars, did that happen? I think we could, we could answer that, um, speaking to the senior center staff, senior programs, and that's, we'd be all right with that, so.
Just had a question for Tom. The Stratton Brook, Bushy Hill site, we understand that stands alone, and the two sites that are in the center of town, the Eno site and the Performing Arts site, is, have you seen, you've looked at a lot of senior community centers, have you seen instances where may, maybe the activities of a senior center and community center are shared between two sites? I don't know what configuration, I'm just envisioning something like having the exercise room at the Performing Arts Center, which could be used by a bigger population while the senior center remains here, just for some ideas.
I haven't seen that in terms of new center planning. Certainly, communities rely on all of their assets to accommodate their program needs as best they can, but from a senior center perspective and a community center perspective, it's easiest to program and oversee those programs when it's all at one site. The cost to operate, manage, and oversee is, is physically less. It doesn't mean that centers don't have off-site events or operations. Many senior centers have programs that extend, you know, outside their boundaries, so to speak, whether it's field trips or it's visiting programs to other, other centers, or, you know, dances or dinner dances off-site. So there are ways to do it, but on a regular basis, day-to-day, no, we don't usually see that. Now, Main Street is a little different in that if you had two, two facilities that were relatively close, and you could, in theory, walk from site to site, or be shuttled from site to site, then maybe it would work. However, while we felt that having Eno Hall as a center would, to some degree, enliven Main Street more and continue to propagate the mission of the Main Street Group, the reality is, is that the older group of seniors or active adults are physically, in many cases, physically challenged, not necessarily in a wheelchair or in a, in, you know, or walking with a cane, but pedestrian walking, or, you know, pedestrian communication between sites, or even between the center and adjacent restaurants or stores, for instance, would probably be more limited than might be anticipated because of the nature of the patronage. That's a bit speculation, but based on our experience, we're seeing that. So if we have to make a recommendation to the community, we would say that the center would serve not only the seniors, but the community as a whole in the form of a, let's say, community senior center, if I went in that direction, better if all of the services were provided in the same facility.
Okay, that's helpful. The reason I asked is, and I'd be interested in hearing some feedback from the community, but some folks have mentioned they, they don't consider themselves, they may feel reluctant to go to a senior center where everything is in one place, but may, may like to use services that are not strictly senior citizen related. So I just wanted to see if you were sensing that trend, or as people live longer and...
Well, what I can say is that senior centers are really becoming active adult centers, and seniors are becoming younger and younger.
Thank you.
We, we have, our lifespan is growing and the quality of those years is growing, in part because of the services that we provide at senior centers, in part because of, you know, proactive communities where the patronage, citizenship is very active. So they are very youthful. So I think some of that perception is changing in communities throughout the state. Also, what I can tell you is that most of the communities we're working with are trending towards community slash senior centers. And the buildings, the facilities themselves, serve that purpose quite well. And the reason I say that is because traditionally, seniors, seniors or active adults are using the facility from early in the morning to about 2:00, 2:00, 2:00, 3:00 PM at its heaviest times. And it depends on the programming. If you have lunch programming, we find that seniors tend to use the center from early in the morning till after lunch, or just before lunch till around 2:00 o'clock, and they pair their activities with coming for lunch and socialization. But after that, use tends to drop off traditionally. So communities then use the center for after-school activities. For instance, Darianne has used services program that takes place, the arts and crafts rooms are used, the games rooms are used, the socialization spaces are used, the adjacent athletic facilities can be used for recreation, and then the ins, interior refreshment cafeteria-type uses support that. What we find is that the after-school youth service programs tend to die off around 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, we're going home, we have dinner, and then in the evenings, it becomes a community youth center. So you have a very small percentage of senior programs in the evening, but now we have Board of Finance meeting in the community room, we have, you know, you name it, Cub Scouts. Cub Scouts are always looking for a place, even the Eagle Scouts, you know? They need a small home. But, so the facility will ultimately find use for the entire community.
Got it. Thank you. If there's no other questions, if we could set a pub, public forum date for June 10th at 6:00 PM?
I'll make that motion, Mary.
Thank you.
I'll sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. We'll get that information out, and thank you again, Tom and Rich, for that. Next item is approving the tax refunds. We have a small number of tax refunds tonight. Those are in the amount of $998.06. Those have been recommended and approved by the tax collector.
I move we accept.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a referral to the Planning Commission for 8-24 Review. This is a request to release excess road right-of-way for 8 Firetown Road to the Butters. We've been approached by the residents of Firetown Road, and they have asked that we release some of the frontage that was originally reserved for a state project. That project is long since been finished, that was in the 1980s, and so the owners would like us to release that property in exchange for giving the town some rights for consistent right-of-way. The value of the land that's being released to 8 Firetown Road is 0.059 acres. The land released to the town is 0.016 acres, for a net land of 0.043 acres. The, Rich has done a good job in trying to give us the value, because the question was for the board, is how, how expensive of land are we talking about? Is this something that the town needs to discuss further? And Rich has talked to the assessor, who valued the net land transit action at $180.60. So it's not a big transfer. The owners have done all of the legal work, we're very grateful for that, and it's just coming before us to clarify and approve and refer it to Planning Commission for the referral. Any questions for Rich? Can I have a motion?
Move that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, Rich. Our next item is to recognize the month of June as Handicap Parking Awareness Month. And Ed Lamontagne from the Indian Committee Commission is here. Welcome, Ed, and thank you for everything that you do for us. We're pleased to designate June as Handicap Awareness Month, and once we dedicate the month, I know you'd like us to notify the Simsberry Police Department to pay particular attention to public parking areas and make sure that they're not, there's no violation of laws with respect to those handicap parking areas. And since Officer Gary Gray is here with us this evening, I'm sure he'll get the message very quickly, so. I don't know if, Ed, you wanted to say anything, or just?
Thank you, this is a second year, I'm, we're in the education last year, Congress Police Department. Since then, the citizens have presented a hand, and said, "Look, we're going to explain it afterward." We improved the, I think, we were very, very, and we were...
Fines, yes, the fine.
So they were, they, they, and we had a certain days of petition in the, the high school, we practiced, so we, the culture, the, the, and, 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 and.
Great. Thanks, Ed. Thanks for raising awareness, and thanks for working to enforce that folks who need to park in a designated area have that opportunity to do that, so. Can I have a motion to recognize June as Handicap Parking Awareness Month?
I'll move that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item is to accept a donation with our thanks of $2,500 from the Simsberry Junior Women's Club to the Social Service Department Dial Right Program. The junior women's does a lot of wonderful fundraising for our community, and we are just pleased that they selected the Dial Right Program among all of the applicants for fundraising to receive donations. So I'd like a motion to accept the donation with our thanks.
I'll make that motion, Mary.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is our Eagle Scout, Dan Giardi, Giardi is here. Welcome, Dan. And Dan has a very special project. He's been working with Jerry Tonner to clear and re-landscape the area in front of the Simsberry Farms Apple Barn. He's done an excellent job in his submission in talking about the flagpole and the monument, which is dedicated to World War I veteran, Orrin Kilborn, and he, he points out that the family sold the land in which the Apple Barn is, is on. And Dan, welcome, and thank you for coming forward tonight and volunteering to do some work for the town. You want to briefly explain your project?
Yeah.
You want to take the link? You set the stand near the table. Or over that one?
Well, a little background, there's a monument donated to a World War I veteran, Mr. Orrin Kilborn, and he originally owned the land of Simsberry Farms, and when he passed away, his family donated the land to Simsberry, and it was renamed Simsberry Farms. So basically, my project is like... So basically, my project is like re-landscaping the area around the monument. There's like a garden, but right now, it's all very overgrown, and there's lots of invasive species like poison ivy and just, and the trees are sick and dying. And so my plan is going to be removing the trees, the infected shrubs in there and all the underbrush, and then replanting more shrubs that like full sun, because it's an area that doesn't get much shade. Also, that like to, that are very low maintenance, so we don't have people working out there. And we don't want the shrubs to be more than four to five feet, because there's a view of the ridge and some benches by the area, so users who use the Apple Barn are able to enjoy that. And I'd like to plant perennial flowers around the flagpole and monument to make that area more vibrant. And after I plant everything, I'm going to overlay the area with at least five inches of wood chips, so none of the poison ivy can grow back through. And at the end, I'd like to have a rededication ceremony for Orrin Kilborn, and that's mainly it. I'm looking for your approval. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Dan? Dan tells me that he's, he has plenty of time to get the project done. He's not rushing to get it done before his 18th birthday, so we think, commend you for your initiative, and thanks to your parents for being here tonight and supporting you. It's really wonderful to see their support of you, so that's very nice.
Thank you.
I think it's great. This is another one of those volunteer efforts that make our town great. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dan, and good luck to you. Good job. Our next item is to enter into a contract with Interactive Health for an employee wellness program, subject to reviewed approval of the contract terms by Town Council. Council has reviewed the contract. If you recall, when the Board of Selectmen settled the CSEA contracts, one of the suggestions was to put in place a wellness program which allowed our employees to stay healthy and stay fit, encourage them to participate in programs, and with all of the information being confidential, which would result in our employees being healthier and reducing our costs to both the town and to our taxpayers. I want to thank Tom Cook, who has worked hard to put this program in place, and we have had this contract reviewed by Council, and it's ready for your action. Basically, what Interactive Health will do is employees are encouraged to do a health evaluation. If they participate in that health evaluation, they receive a check for $100, so that's an incentive. They then get an individualized wellness program, wellness plan. If they follow that plan for the next year, they'll see their insurance premiums reduced. So it's a win-win for the employees, keeps them healthy, a win-win for the town and our taxpayers in reducing costs. And it's all confidential, it's all voluntary, and it's great to offer this program. Any questions? Oh, and I should thank the Board of Selectmen for supporting the program during negotiations, and thank the employees in contract negotiations who agreed to participate. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make that motion, Mary.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is to approve the award of an agricultural license agreement for Dewey Farm. Just for some background, the board authorized town staff to issue an RFP. We did do so. In the meantime, Tom Roy has been cleaning up the site, and thank you, Tom, for getting the outside site cleaned up. We are now working on the inside of the home. The home, as I reported to the board, does have some chemicals and hazardous materials which cannot be removed by town staff, they need to be removed professionally, so we're in the process of doing that. In the meantime, the board did receive one response, and thank you, Rich, for putting out the RFP. We did get one submittal that was from the Ryan Family Flower Farm. The proposal is to pay $78 an acre. That is consistent, actually a little more than what our other leases have. The submittal is for a five-year license period. However, tonight, after speaking with Rich, given the fact that we're still cleaning up the house and don't know the condition of the house, and don't know if it will be removed or rented, we were hesitant to recommend that five-year period until we get more information from town staff as to the condition of the house and how that would affect the farm. So what we'd like to do tonight is to make sure that we allow Mr. Ryan to get on there and to use the farm this season, so that we won't miss any growing period. However, just to award it for a one-year agreement, in fairness to the town, so that we can identify the future use of the town house. Any questions on that? Yeah.
Just one question on the submittal. It says that within two years, I will change over to all organic fertilizers. Does that mean in the first two years, they're using non-organic? So pesticides and all the banned?
Rich, can you answer that question?
There are a particular issue with agricultural fertilizers, but what he's indicating is that normally there's a two-year transition period to bring an agricultural property into organic.
Okay.
He's not using any pesticides or pesticides, or traditional items of concern.
Okay, because we're paying to clean it up, I wouldn't want to see it get worse.
And that's a good question. You can't get certification as organic farm in the first year that you farm. You have to prove that you haven't used chemicals over a period of time.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to award the license agreement for one year?
Move that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is to approve a transfer of $41,000 from the Board of Finance Contingency Reserve Fund to the library building capital account to enable the replacement of the original air conditioner at the library and repair parts for the new air conditioner. There is additional funds left from the contingency reserve fund, and there is funds that are in the building capital fund, and they need to be combined to cover the cost of the air conditioner. Tonight, Sue Bullock's here, is one of her last acts as library director, and Marian O'Neil, who chairs library board trustees, is here. Thank you for being here. And Tom Roy can also attest to the number of calls that he gets from the library. So I don't know technically, I don't know if the board wants to know technically the problems that have really plagued that air conditioning system for a long time, but I'm assured that this will address the concern. So I don't know if, Rich, you wanted to add anything, or Tom?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions on my side.
Yes.
So I gave Tom a call earlier today just to understand what the units we're talking about, so it's my understanding that there's a very old unit that we're talking about replacing here, and then a unit that was installed during the renovation that has since had some significant issues. So just, I believe that to be true, right, Tom, from what we talked about?
Yeah. [inaudible]. Right. [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
And Rich, do you know why, was it just because the air conditioning unit was working at the time, why the whole thing wasn't, the old piece wasn't replaced when the new addition?
No, it was moved. [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
And I got to ask, just because I'm the numbers guy, why didn't we talk about this during the budget process? I mean, this, to me, seems like a CNR item that should have been part of that process.
It was the budget money that was placed. [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
All right, I guess I was mistaken, because I thought my understanding was it's failed before, and then we got it going again, and then it failed again.
[inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
And just for clarification, if we don't approve this tonight, the money goes back to the general fund and then gets re-appropriated. So it's not that we're asking for a transfer from surplus. This is money that will go back to the general fund, and then we'll have to wait a year to re-appropriate it.
Understood.
Yeah. Other questions? Can I have a motion to approve? Oh, move that. More?
No, I.
Do we have a second?
I, no.
I'll second it.
Second. Discussion?
Thank you. Yes. So, Tom, though you originally said six months you've been trying to get the warranty, but at the same time, we're saying we didn't have it in time to discuss this during the capital project, or during the budget process, so.
[inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
And my other follow-up question would be, the money you're saying that would revert back, this money was in the library fund for the expansion originally? Is that what the money's left over from?
I wonder. [inaudible].
Okay. And so why all of a sudden would it revert back if we?
We have to close, we have to close those accounts. They have to be closed. I think that's why the library board is bringing it forward now. We have to close the accounts. They do have some money in the building capital, so rather than, you know, keep making the repairs till the next budget cycle, since the money is available, they'd like to just use the money now and fix the problem. Any other questions?
[inaudible]. [inaudible]. [inaudible].
That was kind of my point before of if this was a known issue, I'm disappointed that we weren't at least made aware of it during the budgetary process. I mean, you know, because the town is.
It did not come up in the budget process.
Because, I mean, the town's being asked to outlay $41,000 here, extracurricular of the library building account, so. And it's two different funds that are paying for this. It's my understanding, if the numbers on the sheet are right, $54,000, $60.62 is coming from the library building fund, and then another $41,000 is coming out of the BOF contingency fund, which is not the building fund.
It's the contingency fund for the library.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
So that. Any other question?
All right, I'm sorry, that was.
I mean, just if, just to clarify, again, the library board is bringing it to us now before we close out the fiscal year. If we don't take action, we're just going to continue doing what we're doing, we're going to have inconsistent heat. We will communicate to the library board that if they have capital needs, that the proper course is to bring it to us during the budget process. But again, this is not budget money, this is money that will go back to the general fund and will be re-appropriated. So I just want to make sure that the public knows. Yeah. So other questions?
Just to clarify again, you're saying then this $41,000 from the Board of Finance Contingency Reserve Fund is actually library money?
To the library building capital account. That's what it, that's what it was identified for. That's what, that's what our finance director indicated.
And then the $41,000 is from where?
In the budget.
We already have it in the budget.
And that's?
And where in the budget?
Let me see. Is that in your line item, Sue? The funding is in your library line item, the building capital. You have the balance. We're not transferring from reserves, the general fund reserves. That's not what you're asking.
We have $54,000. [inaudible]. And 41,000. So where is that $41,000 coming from? Which fund? Well, [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
So if there's not money, then we have to pull it from somewhere else.
Right. [inaudible]. And I just wanted to say that, [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
I don't think there's a question on the need for it, we're just trying to understand the funding.
I would suggest that we, if the board wants to know exactly where the funding's coming from, have the finance director report out where exactly it's coming from.
Yeah, again, I'm not.
Is it was, when it was originally presented, it was presented as if there were funds within the account?
Right.
And so I don't want to misrepresent to the board, but I might have the information they have.
Understood.